Can move forward. Again, we can accept that the bid proposal with those options as we've negotiated, or because it's substantially over budget, we have the option to cancel this round of bids and rebid the project. The same thing happened to the Army Corps of Engineers. So they had to cancel theirs as well on the Wilmington Harbor on our, on our east end. So they are going to be rebidding this spring as well. Then, so that is an option for us. So I leave that to your discussion.
Counsel, I give you the opportunity to, to start. John, you want to kick us off? We'll just go down the line.
Sure. Well, disappointing. Clearly, the, the plan developed by our engineers was not in contact with the marketplace. So as I look at this, weigh the option to enter into a bidding situation similar to this year, next year, I, I have very little confidence that the market will move downward. If anything, I think it's likely to stay the same. Which takes me to the other option, which is less than what we would have desired, less than specced by our engineers, and expends less dollars than the total amount that we could expend, which would be 40 million. So it's very much for me, Sophie's Choice, like pick your poison here. Do you want to gamble on next year's market and hope to get the fully realized project and the maximum amount of benefit for the dollars? Or you don't want to run that risk and you, you want to take a scale, I'm going to call this a scaled back version, right, of what might have been. And I'll just end by saying, you know, I don't know what kind of forecasting market-wise Moffett Nichols was using, but they're just way, way off. They're not even close here. So that's a predicament going forward if they remain our engineer. And I'll stop there.
Go ahead, Terry.
Okay, so he, Councilor Bach alluded to some questions, concerns I have. The first is, has anybody made any mention about why the bids were so high? Was it because we were out of touch with the marketplace? Or did we hit a bad bidding period for these dredgers and they didn't need the work or couldn't do the work so they priced themselves out? Secondly, if we rebid this in the spring, you know, what assurance, if any, do we have, to your point, that prices are going to be better? Or could they in fact go up? So I, you know, I, I would like to hear Moffett Nichols take on these two kind of question situations, as well as any insight you might have, manager.
Thank you. And we do have Beth on the line from Moffett and Nichols, in case you have those questions. Is she available, Lisa?
Um, as far as I know.
Lisa, Beth, can you hear us?
Hey, I sure can. Can you hear me?
Can you address those two questions, please?
The two questions are being what, why, why is it different from what we had estimated and what we think will happen next year? Those are the two questions at hand. I think part of the reason why it ended up being very different, and as Catherine mentioned, that also happened to the Army Corps of Engineers, engineers estimate, so I don't think it was in something where it was a Moffett and Nickel mistake. We have a person who's our professional cost estimator, came from the dredging industry, who came up with our engineer's estimate. I think what ended up happening from, to our understanding is that the work, the two companies that bid, neither of them had the capacity to do it this year, as we had initially wanted to start this January and complete it by April during the dredging window. Neither of the companies that bid had the capacity to do it this year. Then they also submitted bids for next year as well. And those were more, a little bit more in line with the pricing. Where the differential was, is in the mobilization costs, more so than in the unit cost estimates. The mobilization cost provided by both companies was significantly higher than our estimate. We haven't gotten a, you know, full answer from either company about why that is. But as alluded to, it's just, I believe it's something to do with how much work they have on the table and what availability all of the hopper dredging fleet has. What our estimator did indicate, that one of the companies, Weeks Marine, had sold some of their smaller hopper dredges, so they're working with a more limited fleet. That's something, that was a recent development in terms of the availability of the hopper dredging fleet. The environmental restrictions also provide a really limited timeframe for this work to be done between middle of November and April of each year. And so there's a lot of competition with beach projects occurring during that time. So I think that's part of the reason why everything was higher than expected. The, for next year, I, I agree with Councilmember Martin and that I, you know, it's hard to predict what could happen. We did only have two bids. There is at least one other company that could potentially do the work and had submitted a number of questions regarding the process, but really did not want to bid on this season. It might be that they would provide a bid if it was, if it was rebid in the spring. Something else that there, there's a lot of uncertainty at this time of the companies, what, what availability they're going to be having next year during that specific dredging window. So bid, you know, bidding now, they, they have that, they don't know what else is coming. So there's some uncertainty that might improve, or there might be less uncertainty if we rebid it in the spring. However, to your point, Councilmember Martin, you know, the marketplace for dredging is, is, is looking very competitive. So there's no guarantee that prices would be better in the spring. So, you know, it, it is a risk. We have been working very hard. We pressed very hard to get all of the permits and everything lined up for this project. And we made a good faith effort to speak with the engineer, I mean, the dredging company to work out something within the town's budget. They indicated that they'd really like to work with the town, but they were just constrained by all of these uncertainties and scheduling factors. Hope that answers your question.
May I ask a follow-up question?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Councilman Martin's younger brother, by the way. I'm Councilman Bach. But thank you. So my question is, it's a competitive market, it was disappointing outcomes this year. Give me your level of confidence. Give me a number in terms of rebidding this. It might be better, it might not, but is that 50% confidence? Because we're about to make a decision here. Put a number on it for me, if you can.
I think if, you know, I'm not sure I can do that right now, Councilmember Bach. What I would say is that if the town is comfortable with the pricing that is presented, that is a certainty that can be awarded, and that is a choice that the town can make. It's the town's, you know, financial decision and decision about maintaining their beach. That's a decision that the town will need to make. If you'll recall, it's my understanding that the same thing happened, I believe, with the 2019 to 2020 project, that that was rebid and it was more favorable for the town when it was rebid. I was not with Moffett Nickel at that time, but it's my understanding that that, that took place. So there, you know, is that piece of information out there. But as, as the town manager has indicated, there is, you know, sort of the, the bird in the hand there. If the town is comfortable with the pricing that's presented and has the funding in place and wants to go ahead and take that action now, that opportunity is there for you.
Thank you.
Mayor, since we have Beth on the line, I do have one technical question.
Go ahead.
If I could ask. Beth, should we choose to go ahead with this? We're expecting a 20, 20% reduction in sand volume. Can you explain to us what that's going to do to the design profile that you created for this project, if we have 20% less sand?
Yeah, sure. So the, there's two pieces to the project. One is restoring the dunes and the places where those need to be restored. We would still do that because those dunes are providing that level of protection to the town. And then there is a berm in front of that to sort of absorb long-term erosion. What we would do is reduce the size of that berm by 20%. That does reduce the, you know, expected length of time before re-nourishment might be needed. That said, depending upon the climate and everything like that, there's, you know, I know you all have spoken with Johnny Martin and Sam Morrison regarding how that decision was made in terms of the six years and the amount, the volume. But there, you know, there's always uncertainty with the weather and so forth. But essentially, what that would do is, it would still restore the dunes and the places that need those to be restored. And then there would be a berm, the advanced fill, and that would just be slightly smaller than what we had originally designed.
Thank you.
Phil.
Hi, Beth. Phil Kraft. I'm, I'm sorry you have to absorb all the punches for your entire company, but, but still, you're the one answering the questions for Moffett Nichols. My first question is, if not Moffett Nichols' problem, I know it's not the Town of Oak Island's problem, at what time did anyone realize there were only going to be two players giving us bids?
I mean, the, I, I guess we realized when we opened the bids, Councilmember, that the Army Corps actually only had one bidder. From the attendance at the pre-bid meetings and the questions that we received, we actually thought we would also get a bid from one other company, as I mentioned, Manson, that asked a number of questions. We had additional, several additional companies that were on the pre-bid meeting. So I wouldn't say that we knew until we opened the bids that there were only going to be two bids.
Going forward, and we're in a holding pattern, waiting on the Army Corps of Engineers, tell us if they have any help for us five or six years from now. It's my understanding the Corps is going to give us sand for seven or eight blocks on the east end this year. Is that correct?
I can't really speak exactly for the Army Corps. It's my understanding that they're rebidding their project in March, the last I heard from Brendan Dooley from the Corps. I think that, I, I guess I was assuming that that would be rebid for the following year because if they rebid it in March, that does not leave them a lot of time to finish the project by the April deadline of the dredging window for environmental reasons.
Will that be the same situation for the Lockwood Folly dredging?
Lockwood Folly dredging's already been awarded. So that's a matter of when the contractor actually gets there and does it. So that should be completed by April, to my understanding, again, recognizing that I don't speak for the Army Corps.
Okay. I'm with, same thinking Councilman Bach, and I think you alluded to it. We have no guarantees what the price will be a year from now. Is there any prospects that state, federal, or even county would help, be able to help us in this regard? Going back to our taxpayers every five years and asking for $40 million is scary. And going a year from now and asking for more than 40 million is scary. Do you know if there's any prospects of state, federal, county help on the horizon?
Great question, Councilmember Kraft. It's my understanding that town staff is actually working on a CSDM grant application. That does require a 50-50 match with town funds. I believe Courtney Milliron is working on that currently. We've provided her with some additional information. I know that some of the towns up in Dare County received $7.5 million last year for that. So that's one source, one opportunity to leverage funding from the, from the town with state funding.
Lastly, my thought, without hearing everyone else's thought, on a scale of 1 to 10, 7 is better than 0. So we're in a bad situation, but we need sand now. Thank you.
Bob?
So Beth, Bob Chula here. Just a few questions, if I may. So the scope of the project is being reduced by 20% in placement volume, correct?
Potentially.
That's what we're proposing?
Correct.
Okay. So with that, the work that the Army Corps is doing on the east end and the Lockwood Folly on the west end, so we took that into consideration. We knew those projects were going to take place. So that's not going to make up for the 20% reductions. Is that correct?
Completely separate.
Separate, okay.
Right. We had those bid as an alternative 1 and alternative 2 for the east and west end. But then what we're, the proposal before you eliminates both of those alternatives and does a 20% reduction of the sand in the middle of those two projects.
Okay, that's helpful. So thank you. So with respect to the cost, so the cost, the unit price, right? So the initial proposal that we got from WMI was for $20 per cubic yard. Okay. So, and that was for a much larger, that was for 20% higher volume, right? Which was the original contract. We've now reduced the scope by 20%. They've increased their price to 25. And my understanding is now, we believe, and none of us are attorneys, but believe that we can hold their feet to the fire, to them to do it for $20. They were bidding on a different project, though. The scale of the project was different. So do we feel, from a legal perspective, that we have grounds to move forward and pursue this?
Yeah, yes. Beth, do you want to add to that? We did, we have a legal review of this. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, so as Catherine mentioned, we did run this by the town's attorneys, and they said that since the town had not come to an agreement, that that original bid is still valid for the 60-day timeframe. Our technical specifications did allow for a variation in volume of plus or minus 20%. That's where that 20% is coming from, to reduce the cost.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you. Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Catherine.
Mark?
I appreciate my colleagues digging into, you know, how we got here today. I think that's important information and what it looks like in the future. I wish we could predict the future. My questions are going to be related more to, as Councilman Chula was, was moving in the direction of, is, is contracts, right? And there's, there's a couple of different contracts here that I want to look at. So first, if, if you had provided technical specifications on the initial bid, that this could be plus or minus 20% sand volume, why is the, the dredging company, WMI, why did they go to $25 a cubic yard when you approached them about trying to negotiate a better deal? I guess I don't understand, if that factor was already upfront in the bid, why they felt compelled to, to increase the cubic yard price? And then the part B of that question would be, I see nothing in your notes that you sent us that would indicate that they would accept the lower volume. It basically continues to repeat that they would not be able to perform the project at a reduced cost. So even if you go back to them and say, hey, our original bid included a 20%, you know, plus or minus sand volume, they've already come back with a, a higher cubic yard price when you reduce the volume when you were negotiating with them. I, I guess, I'm still trying to understand, we may have legal merit to ask for less volume, but I, I would assume that they still have some sort of grounds to stand on to, to reject fulfilling the, the obligation of, of a lower volume. Is that correct? Help me understand that.
That is a, a great question. And that is a question that we posed to the town's attorneys. They, essentially, they, when we spoke with WMI, they indicated that they weren't able to reduce, and that if they were rebidding it at this time, they would come back at 25. And we asked them to go ahead and submit that to the town so that we had documentation of the negotiation process. The town's attorneys indicated to us that they felt that the original bid was also still valid. WMI had indicated to us that it was some uncertainty with scheduling conflicts and additional question marks about some of their other ongoing projects that would have led to that. So really, that's a legal question. As I mentioned, we did run that by the town's attorneys. So at this time, we believe it, it is still a valid bid. And they haven't asked us to return their bid bond or anything yet, so.
All right, so, so is it safe to say the story goes like this? If, if counsel decided to approve what's being presented at this moment, a reduced volume by, was it 282,000 cubic yards? And try to hold Weeks to the original $20 per cubic yard, bringing in the project at $33.5 million, right? That's, that could be a possibility, that we decide today as a council, that we're going to ask them to do a reduced volume at their original bid unit cost, reducing the overall project. They don't have to accept that. Is, that's my question. Is that correct? Because they've already indicated, you, you just said that when you went to them and said, what would you do for a reduced volume? They changed the unit cost to keep the contract essentially at the same bid if we would do it, award it to them at 1.4 million cubic yards. So if we approve this today, do they still have a leg to stand on to say, we're not going to do it at this price? Is, is it a volume issue?
No.
Or is it a price issue? Like, do they want $39 million and they don't care what the volume is? Or are we truly trying to acquire a certain volume of sand to create a profile that will satisfy us for, you know, maybe not six years? But I remember there were charts that Moffett and Nickel presented that showed like three different numbers. There was a significantly larger number on your chart that had a greater success factor of battling erosion. But then there was a smaller number on your model that said, well, if you only get one major storm, this volume of sand works for you. But you factored in like three major storms or something like that to come up with your recommendation. So I'm trying to figure out, does this dredging company really care about the volume of sand that we're looking at because they've already rejected it once by keeping the price the same? I mean, they went up on their unit price to come in at $39 million, the same price they were at originally. So it's, it's a little confusing to me to, I know we're playing cat, cat and mouse, maybe, with future markets, but are, are they really pricing their bid based on volume? Or are they just pricing their bid because they want $39 million? Because they think we have 40 million to spend?
I mean, we directly asked them for a smaller amount of money, you know, a smaller bid price, so I don't think they are assuming that the town has $40 million to spend. I, you know, this, to me, this is a legal question. The town's attorneys indicated to us that they felt like the bid was still valid. I really don't have anything else that I can add to that, other than that it's a, you know, that's a legal opinion and a legal question that the town's attorneys indicated.
Okay. So there is, there could be a chance that if we voted to approve this volume at their original bid unit price, they could come back and say no. I'm just throwing that out there. I, I think there's a chance that they could reject that, that response from us. All right? So then let's move on to your contract. We spent time listening to Moffett and Nickel about your Phase 3. And at the time, I don't, I'm not sure if you were involved or not, or if you were coming on, but we were asked to break Phase 3 down into two steps. There's a 3A and a 3B, I, I believe.
Correct.
And, and we voted, I'm assuming on 3A. I would hope that we didn't vote on 3B yet. So 3A likely has a, an end date. Do we know what that end date is for, for 3A? What, how long is that contract valid for? What's the expiration of Phase 3A?
She's looking.
Are you asking me? I would need to pull up the contract.
Yeah, well, I meant to do it before I came in today, but I ran out of time. So I was, I was hoping that we'd have that information available. That's fine if we don't. So my, the reason why I bring that up is, if the, if Phase 3A has an expiration date of prior to the end of this year, like, let's say it's June of 2025, I'm just throwing a date out there, I don't know what it is, then your Phase 3A would expire with us before the beach nourishment project would even start. So would, I'm assuming you would come back and ask for a renewal if, if we are faced with an expiration date of your contract? And what I'm trying to figure out here, counsel, just bear with me for a moment. We've already missed the window. We're, we're not getting sand before the beginning of the season this year, right? So we're, we're already going to go one more season without sand. So do we go one more season without sand and perhaps just put the whole project back out for bid, for even engineering services, right? If, if their 3A is going to expire, do we just allow that to expire because we're going to make a decision to rebid later on? Then we can go out and get engineering services bid, we can get a whole new project bid? Or are there performance metrics in your Phase 3A that somehow binds us to you, saying that you have all the data? You've been doing core samples and collecting stuff? I thought you were sharing this information with the Army Corps, so they should have copies of everything. Help, kind of walk me through the timing of this, where Moffett and Nickel may have to come back to us on some kind of renewal before we even start dredging? Is that, you see where I'm going? That's my question.
Is this a question for me?
It's a question for you or for, for our town manager, if anybody has the contract in front of them. I just, I don't remember. I meant to go pull it.
I just pulled it up.
Lisa has it, okay.
Yeah. It says, at least, Lisa, the version I'm looking at says a completion date estimated in fall 2025, which includes construction administration for the project, which we all thought was going to be taking place over this early, the winter and early spring of this year. So what we would suggest doing would be to do a contract amendment and extend the contract.
Okay. Lisa, does it just broadly say fall 2025? Or did we not put a date in? I thought we put a date.
You know, in the contract itself, I don't see a date. It says, this is what's, the work that's going to be provided. So it doesn't say by what.
It's in our, it's in our proposal letter that's attached.
And that's what I'm just looking at.
In, in my version, that's amended. There's a proposal letter dated August 28, 2023. That's what it says in our proposal letter.
Okay. So the scope of that proposal is a completed beach nourishment project, is what I'm hearing? And the deadline was in the fall of 2025?
That was the estimated completion date at the time of the proposal.
Okay. So in theory, we currently would not have a contract with anyone beyond some fall 2025 date to carry forward. fall 2025 date to carry forward a beach nourishment project. So that's something that is going to have to be renewed as well, is what I'm hearing. I think we all, can we all like nod our heads? That, that sounds like there's going to be some sort of contract renewal. Okay, all right.
Or extension of the existing. And a lot of that spend would not have happened because a component of that spend is construction management, which won't take place until next.
Until, right, until next.
Exactly, winter.
Yep, exactly. Okay.
Another way to look at this, and I appreciate you taking us further out, Councilman Martin, is if this project is not undertaken, whether scaled back or fully realized on a rebid, and we end up having to find another provider for engineering and start over, et cetera, et cetera, we're going to bump up against the CRC deadline very, very quickly and crash land. Several hundred homes will be non-compliant, right? Because the original thinking from Moffett Nichols was, if you do this project, you will almost assuredly, not guaranteed, but almost assuredly qualify for the first step of the CRC. So when we think about long-term, we need to think about that risk too. That's huge. I just want to ask one question of Catherine, if I may. Let's suppose that they do this project for 33, 33.3, or whatever it is, scaled back. What happens to the balance of the funding? Where does that go? Is that ours? Is it states?
The balance of the 40 million?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so of the 40 million, there are other expenses that have been occurring in that 40 million.
Any balance that's left? I'll rephrase my question.
There will be very little left. That was the negotiated amount down to what our budgeted amount was.
So we don't need to be concerned with that?
Correct, but there won't be an extensive excess. And if you'll recall, a portion of that additional amount is being reserved for the cores project on the East End, because they said if they have excess sand, would we like to spend 3 million and get this far? And if they have more, would we like to spend another 3 million? And that is much cheaper sand. So we have reserved 6 million for that. So it is sand placement, but at a cheaper rate. So that's why it comes out of that 40 million.
I do recall voting for that, and thank you for clarifying. So that makes the choice very sharp.
Yeah.
Well, so that leaves us 34 million, but we've spent engineering money.
That's correct.
Yep, we've been paying Moffett and Nicol engineering services out of the 40 million now.
As well, and room occupancy taxes were higher than expected.
You know, I'm going to say that, as I said to Johnny Martin, when your engineering costs go past 20%, I become concerned. Yeah, so we paid a lot for engineering. That is a fact, from my point of view.
Well, and, and if I would just add, that, a part of, of that is required. Your beach management plan is required. We're going to spend that.
Is any portion of that amount, Catherine and/or Beth, that we're talking about out of the 40 million, is any of that being expended on the research we're doing for, to determine the possibility of a groin on the West End? Is that all out of the same pot of money, or is that a different pot of money?
That's been a portion of one of the Moffett-Nicol contracts, and they've been working on that analysis, correct, Beth?
So I don't want them, I don't want everyone to think that there's one pot of money of $40 million and it's only being applied to a single project in a single year that there is exploration and work being done to better our overall position by looking at more effective and more efficient possibilities down the road, particularly for the West End.
Also included, just over half million dollars for the initial core project for the federal beach study.
Right.
That we've also already spent out of that.
Right, but that's necessary.
Yep.
We don't want to drop that project.
So your, hold on, just one more quick question for Beth. So your original recommended sand volume, how much of the East End was included? What was your, remind me again what your cutoff was? Which street number you were going to stop?
Well, there's two points, but.
This, gosh, Brandon is our engineer of record, and he knows all the stationing right off the top of his head. I'd have to pull up the bid documents real fast.
I got it roughly, Beth.
Thank you.
To Norton Street, and then the additional 3 million was approximately to 71st Street. And then the additional 3 million would be all the way to Southeast 54th Street. Those are the estimates.
Okay.
And that's 6 million from, from the Wilmington Harbor.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
So in theory, those are areas, if I recall in your reporting, that are more favorable today with, with their profile, i.e., would require less volume of sand to get those up to a, your overall profile? Because those areas were in better condition, I believe, in your report. Is that, is that correct? Aren't those areas in the East somewhat in better condition?
I think that's true, that the dunes are more robust and the, those areas are in a little bit better condition.
Okay, so I'm, I'm feeling a little more confident that a reduced quantity of 1.1 million cubic yards actually builds a better profile than, than, I, I don't like using this word, 20% less sand, because it's, that's just a bad, it's hard, it's bad to use percentages, I think. I think we say it's 282,000 cubic yards less sand, but it comes in at 33 and a half million, which enables us to fund the East End and, and West End projects as have been awarded or moving forward. I know the Army Corps is going to rebid the East End, but it sounds like almost to me that the volume we're asking for is, is actually a fairly robust amount of sand and will create a decent profile. I'm, I'm a little worried that we may try to use scare tactics to, to avoid moving forward with this bid, i- if we can get it. And that's my other concern is, like I said, we can ask for it, the dredging company could reject it, and then how does that reflect on us, right? I guess it doesn't reflect poorly on us, just reflects poorly on them. But reading your notes, it doesn't sound like they're very good at negotiating. I mean, it's almost like they have a hard line in the sand, no pun intended, and they're not willing to move off of it. But, you know, I guess if this council decides to give it a try, we can, we can give it a go and see what happens.
So staying on that, if we could, Councilman Martin, that the, talk about some legal repercussions. So Catherine and Beth, in speaking with town attorney, should this vendor decide to reject our proposal, then we move forward and take legal action? And what does that process look like? Did they, did you get into that at all in discussions with our town attorney?
No, we have not. If we go that route, we would get a more in-depth analysis, if we have to go that.
Okay, so let me switch to project management, if I could. My experience in project management is, we've got a quandary, right? So you've got a potential hostile vendor who, we're going to hold their feet to the fire to do this for $20 a cubic yard, when they have stated in their proposal, they could only do it for 25. So from a project management perspective, Beth, what is, what is the implication for Moffett and Nicol? I mean, are you going to have to be on site 500% more than you thought you were going to, just to make sure they're not cutting corners? Because we're holding their feet to the fire on their initial proposal? And I'll stop there.
I mean, I'd like to believe that we're all professional ethical people, and that if they've submitted that bid, knowing all of the uncertainties that they knew when they submitted the bid, and they haven't withdrawn the bid, at this point, I would expect that as a professional organization, that they would execute the project to the best of their ability. They have indicated on meetings that they want to work with the town. They weren't, they weren't able to get to a number that we had asked them to get to that was lower than this presented number for, that you are reviewing today. However, I did not get the impression that they don't want to work with the town, et cetera. I haven't, in my personal interactions with representatives of that company, found them to be unprofessional or hostile, so I would hope that we could all execute the, execute the project to the best of everyone's ability. Hopefully, they will understand that, you know, there could be potential future work. They want to be, they want to perform a good project. They want to get recommendations from the town to other towns that may want to use them for their beach nourishment projects. I wouldn't expect unprofessional behavior from us or from Weeks.
But I think what Councilwoman Chulo is suggesting, in the famous words of Ronald Reagan, is you verify before you trust. And we need to make sure that we are verifying that they're delivering their product to us as stipulated in the contract. So that may mean you need to take more than one day a week to verify they're doing it.
They do submit surveys and check the, we check the volumes and all that as part of the construction observations.
Right, but there's nothing like boots on the ground, making sure, seeing it.
So if I may ask a few questions. Given the two options, Catherine and Beth, regardless of the one that we choose, we're talking about a renourishment sometime between November 1 of 2025 and April 1, or May 1 of 2026. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So it's the same timeframe. And relative to what Mr. Martin brought forward, although we have a reduced, an overall reduction of sand, our agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers for the East End and the West End potentially gives us less area over which to have to spread that reduced amount of sand.
Correct.
Had we been without the East End. So that's also a positive factor. Have there been any discussions with the Corps relative to Lockwood Folly? In regards to where and how that sand will be placed? There is an area that is not at the toe of the West End, but further up, that is probably further in hardship. The sandbag houses specifically, who need a buffer from the ocean, more so than the houses to the west of them. But I don't know what latitude the Corps is giving us relative to placement of sand and the shape of the sand that it places. Or does it simply put it on the beach and it's then up to us to shape that sand and move it to where we want it?
The, the placement of the 65,000 clarified dollar amount is similar in placement to where it's been in years past, which is up to the split down on the West End, the red roof house analogy. So they're estimating to that same place, which no, does not get it to the sandbag homes. Concerned area. I don't know if they have flexibility of placing it differently, but that's something I can speak with the Corps about.
I think that would be an important question to ask, if you don't mind asking it.
Oh.
And I don't know whether we have furthered the discussion with the Corps as it relates to Holden Beach, who took two dredges from the canal last year, and what impact that means for us. Does that mean we get another dredge from the canal before it goes back to Holden? And then again, I, you and I have spoken about, Catherine, the amount of sand that is shoaling at Kings Lynn. And I know in other islands, when the sand from their ICW shoals on the other side of the island, they simply dredge their own sand and bring it back. And how do we go about exploring that possibility? Because we then could produce more material to protect our, to protect our West End, even if we would have to move that sand ourselves. It won't be the first time we've done that. Is that, is that reasonable?
Sure. It's worth a question.
Yeah, it's all about sediment and where, where it is and how we get it, and what's preventing us from getting it. And I'll make sure I include in this week's report for council, the work that I've been doing with Boem, the town, UCAS, and UNCW for reshaping the sharing of, and the management of sediment, so that at least if Long Bay is the study, that we more proportionately and equitably have access to the same sand as the other towns we're currently having to fight for that same sand. So it's really kind of an exciting project at the federal level.
Senator Mayor, have a motion?
Yes, sir.
In conjunction with the clerk. Make a motion to award the bid to Weeks Marine at a cost of $33,510,000 for a volume of 1,130,000 cubic yards of sand at a unit price of $20. TY, sorry, 20 slash TY.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Second.
Go ahead.
Bob, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you for the motion, John.
While we have you, Beth, let me ask you a couple of questions, if I may. Bill Kraft, the Army Corps was supposed to give us in January of this year their findings on the long-term 50-50 split. Are you hearing anything on that?
I haven't heard anything on that at this time. Are you talking about the CSR M project?
Yes.
We can reach out to Ronnie, who is the project manager on the part of the Corps, and, and just check in with him regarding that.
And if I can ask the town manager?
Yeah, I'm going to make sure I have that clear. Beth, is that the 600,000?
Or what are you?
No, I'm asking about the long-term, the Army Corps.
Right.
Did, did a study, and we were one of the selected towns. And they were good to let us know in January this month what some of their findings were. It's a long-term project, five or six years out.
That's the federal beach project he's referring to.
Correct, yes.
They're a little bit behind.
Have we heard?
They are, we, we have, we've heard they're about three months behind, but they're trying to catch up a bit. And if I may, just because you're on that topic, I have confirmed with Congressman Rousers' office that the 600,000 that we have requested is right now still in. It did not come forward with the recent CR with the federal government. She confirmed that's, that was counted as additional, so it's not in the CR. But it is still alive in one of their budget bills.
And secondly, we talked about the Lockwood Folly exchange, our turn, Holden Beach's turn, as the mayor just alluded to a while ago. We talk about that endlessly. Can we get that finalized? Can we get, find out how come we don't get our second turn? Get aggressive on that?
So my understanding from the Corps is that's an every-other-year project. They did a one-time separate thing by themselves. So I, to my knowledge, that isn't affecting our every-other-year rotation, but I will follow up on that and find out.
I think the key question, Catherine, might be where they took that second pri- I think the key question, Catherine, might be where they took that second project from. If it was from the same place the Corps would have mined the sand, then that does affect us. If they were to take it further up into the channel, it doesn't necessarily mean it's theirs to take, but I think context matters in terms of how we frame those questions.
I'm sorry, Bill.
I'm fine. That was my question.
Motion to adjourn? Question?
If, yeah, this is, if I could just encourage my colleagues to, let's try to get a workshop on the calendar to start to deal with the supplemental regulations. We, we browbeat Matt for not moving that project along, and now we're the ones who are taking our time with it. So I would just hope we could, could get something scheduled to work on that.
That's right. January's busy.
It is. There's much work to do. Catherine, anything else from you?
No, thank you very much.
Any other, anything else from council?
Second.
Go ahead.
I think Terry ready.
All in favor?
Let's go home.
Very good.